Can you see yourself? Up in here.
Bart here?
Yeah, Bart's here.
Alright, I didn't see him on there.
He's not saying anything.
All the council members are here, Steve, so whenever you're ready to start, we can.
Alright, well, it's seven o'clock, so let's get this started. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First thing we have is the public hearing for the budget amendment. Do you want to amend on that, Deb?
Okay, so the budget amendment we've been working on and the explanation is we're amending for the insurance settlement from the duracial storm and for the catalyst grant. And for expenditures, we're amending for the police car purchase, ambulance meter wage, the duracial storm repairs, the street repairs, and the water plant repairs.
Alright, is there anybody who wants to comment on that or objections or anything that they want? They can speak up now. If not, we'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Is that right, Deb?
Yes.
Alright, anybody want to make a motion to close the public hearing?
Jim, so moved.
Ron, a second.
Alright, and let's see Rodney.
Hi.
Ronnie.
Hi.
Jim.
Hi.
Bart.
Hi.
And Levi.
Hi.
Alright, public hearing is closed. And then everybody got a packet for the agenda tonight, and I read a chance to look at it. We have a motion to approve the agenda for tonight.
We'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Levi.
Jim, second.
And second to Jim, and Rod.
Hi.
Ron.
Hi.
Jim.
Hi.
Bart.
Hi.
And Levi.
Hi.
And everybody in your package should have got a approval or corrections of the last last month's meeting. Correction of the minutes, anybody? If not, entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Levi, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Levi.
Bart, I'll second.
And second Bart. Okay, Rod.
Hi.
Ron.
Hi.
Jim.
Hi.
Bart.
Hi.
And Levi.
Hi.
Alrighty, moving on here, we will we have some visitors tonight. Kim Aker, are you here, Kim?
I am, yes.
Alright, and what do you have for us?
Okay, our activities since the last meeting at Main's Clarence Main Street. The Uplift Commercial Curb Appeal Grant Committee did meet and decided on categories that building owners in the district will be able to apply for. And those categories will be commercial upgrades to windows and doors, exterior facade improvements that are historically compatible with buildings, laid signs, and awnings. Each one of those categories will have specific dollar cap amounts. I did apply for the Main Street Iowa Open for Business Competition Grant on behalf of Mill Creek Cafe for their storefront project that will be in front of the High Point Event Center building. I did approach all the business owners in the Main Street District about that grant. Three of them expressed interest, but only one business presented me with a project. So that is the project that we put forward. The vintage metal chairs that our design committee is working on have been dropped off at a facility to be professionally sandblasted and powder coated. We did have our Easter business promotion prior to the week of Easter. And then Clarence the Bunny was at the Raymond Conrad Memorial Park on the 27th. We gave away sixty-two goodie bags to children and a grab-and-go craft bag, and we were very pleased with that number. Thought that was a successful event. And the businesses who were open during that event did report that they had good traffic. The info box that I have been talking about putting next to the Lincoln Highway marker for the Lincoln Highway Byway Passport Program finally got put in the ground over there. Conditions were finally correct to get it in. There are flyers in that box that have information about all of our retail and food businesses in that. So people who stop there will have access to that. The Let's Play a Game Facebook promotion that I've been running to get information about our various businesses downtown has been going really well and getting a lot of good dialogue on that. So I'm adding all of that to our inventory as we go of our historic downtown buildings. I have continued monthly Zoom meetings with other Main Street Iowa directors and training webinars. And then Third Thursdays on Main Street with extended shopping hours will resume this Thursday night, weather permitting, with a root beer float giveaway, trying to draw some people downtown to start spring shopping. We will be hosting a Clean Up the Curbs Night on April twenty-third from five to six thirty. Dinner will be provided by Mill Creek Cafe after we're done working, so you know, get the word out that we could use some help with sweeping the streets downtown and all that goes with that. Okay, now, as far as the digital information sign, I have completed all the narratives that I need to do to apply for the ARP grant that I am applying for to try to get that mostly paid for. The it's due on the fourteenth of April. I was waiting for a bid from Wes, but I got that today. So that's taken care of. The bid from Wes to run the electrical wire out to that area is eight hundred sixty-three dollars and eighty cents. The the base cost of the sign that I would like to have put in is thirty-one thousand seven hundred forty-four dollars and fifty cents, or seven forty-one fifty-five. That includes the cost of the sign, an upgrade to a brick base, sales tax, training on the keyboard, installation of the sign, and technical support. I do realize that that is a lot of money. It's one of those kind of, this is what I want, shoot for the stars kind of thing. Hoping that I get it. If if ARP does approve a grant but says, you know, we won't give you quite as much, they do allow for you to scale your project back, which is which is good. And then that's what we would do. We would just lessen the lessen the size of the sign, probably. I realized that I had talked about this a lot, but I had never really asked the council for specific permission to put the sign in front of the municipal building. So what I'm hoping for tonight is that I can get, you know, official, I, I, it's okay to go ahead with that. Would also like, when you apply for grants, it's kind of a big deal for them to see that the communities want to participate in projects. So I was also hoping that you would give permission for Steve or I'm I'm I've heard that you're hiring somebody else at the city too, but for somebody to actually collaborate on the installation so that if there's things that need to be done to the ground, maybe that could be taken care of, that that sort of thing. And that's all I have for you tonight. Any questions for me?
I guess I have one here. You were talking, we had talked before about this digital sign and when you come up with this dollar amount of thirty-one thousand, that was, you know.
It's massive.
That was kind of a shock, so.
Yeah.
Hopefully, you get the grant for this, you know, because it's gonna be, otherwise, it's gonna be, like you said, it's gonna be a lot of money. So anybody have any questions or comments or anything for Kim?
I do, Steve.
Okay.
Did you get another quote from somebody, Kim?
I did, and I I requested three quotes. I did get another quote from Nessper Signs in Cedar Rapids. Their quote was about four to five thousand dollars higher.
I think Media Quest.
The third company, I'm sorry, what?
Media Quest would probably be your next best.
Who?
Media Quest.
Let's see, I don't know who that is.
They're on Cedar Rapids.
Okay, I have not heard of them. Okay.
Alright, anybody anybody else comments or questions for Kim?
On that sign at some point in the future, then, if we wouldn't get that grant, or if we get the grant, you'd come forward with the final with the final budget that that the city would need to get that put in?
Yeah, you know, I'm not asking the city to to make a commitment to say, okay, if we don't get the grant or if we get a certain amount that you would make up the rest or anything like that, it would definitely be something that I would revisit and figure out the best course to go and go from there on that. I'm basically just asking permission to put an information sign, you know, in that little spot, whether it be a glorified bulletin board or whether it be something really fancy.
Well, like you said, thirty-one thousand's a lot to spend. Hopefully, we can see what we get or if we get anything out of this grant. And I suppose we'd go from there, you know, to see what what we how do I say this? What we want to put into it, I guess, so. Anybody else anything for Kim?
It's Jim. The only thing I'm understanding what she's wanting is is for us to commit to an in-kind. Is that is that my understanding?
I'm sorry, Jim, you broke up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Commit to, yeah.
In-kind, I think that's what you were talking about, an in-kind.
Oh, yes, in-kind. If you would just allow your city people on on the clock, I guess, to assist with whatever the installation people would need. I'm not asking for anything monetary in that aspect, except that obviously they would be on the clock.
Right, and you probably need that when you for the grant, right? You need that.
It would be good, yeah, yeah, that would be good, yeah.
Okay.
Right.
I I personally don't see anything wrong with that. I don't know how anybody else feels.
More to that makes sense.
Alright, Kim, well, I guess you've got the okay to move forward then and see what you can find out, get more information and what you get for a grant. I'm sure the next meeting will probably have more information, right?
I hope so. I I cannot remember the date where they make a decision, but it probably will be by the next meeting, yes.
Okay, anybody else anything for Kim? Alright, nothing, then we'll move on. Thanks, Kim.
Thank you.
Alright, and next we have supposed to be Brian Casper. Been sitting in for him is Dan Chapman, and Dan's gonna discuss the new shelter at the park. What do you have for us, Dan?
Well, just to give you an update on that, this has been going on for about a, actually, over a year now. Brian and I have been working on it. It's Brian and I and K Maure actually on the committee. And recently, we've had to make some changes to the building just for budget-wise. The way prices have gone up, the shelter would now be over four hundred thousand, the way it was designed. So we made a lot of changes on it. I sent an email to Deb today to have her send out. Hopefully, you guys got it, the drawing, the plans for the shelter. We reduced the size of it to get below a hundred people, which changes the price of a lot of materials. We took the covering off of the patio. It's still a patio, it's just not covered, which can be done at any time. Then we actually made the building a little bit more square rather than the back storage area actually used to have some corners in it, so we took those out. We took the brick off the front. We're just gonna use siding to make it look better. So we just kind of not really cut corners, but for price-wise, so I haven't got all the estimates back in yet from all that. Some are dragging their feet, but so for what we've got raised, we're gonna have enough money to do the whole project, so, which is really good. And I know Brian told me that Wine Coop told him, as soon as he gets done with his field work, he's gonna start taking down the old shelter, and then they'll start on the grade work and doing the doing the footings and stuff. So we did get the I got the estimate from Triple J, and they're going to run a separate line from First Avenue to the building, the two-inch building, or two-inch line to the building. It's gonna have its own water supply, obviously, because they shut all the other water off at the park, so it's gonna have its own. And I haven't got, Wes said the materials for his has gone way up, but I'm waiting on another estimate from Loud and Plumbing Heating on that to compare. And I haven't got my bid yet from Welby. He was updating his, but he said it'd be a lot less than what it was, so. That's kind of the update so far. You guys got any questions for me?
Well, Jim, is it necessary that we take down that particular building?
Yeah, because the old one's going in that spot.
Okay, but that's what I'm saying is, is there a way that we can keep that building and put the new one in somewhere in the middle or somewhere?
That really wasn't my call, Jim. That was the park boards. You know, I'm I'm this really isn't my project. I just kind of got roped into it type of thing.
Okay.
So Brian said that building's you know, probably if one had to go, that's one that should go. It's the perfect spot because the one that's there right now, the new building's gonna sit sit more east-west. That one kind of sits at an angle. And the parking lot's gonna be right next to the to the playground. So the theory is if people have a family reunion or class reunion, what have you, kids can go play on the playground, parents can go walk around the walking trail, you know, everything's right there. With the splash pad, everything else. So that just kind of see the best be the best fit, so. And this is gonna, it's gonna be year-round facility, so.
Well, that's that's the the other thing that you know, everything is shut off out there during the winter. And I guess if it's gonna be a year-round facility, that it puts the burden on the city to try to keep the the roads open during the winter and and the parking area, I would say.
Right.
This I I wasn't aware it was going to be a year-round, I guess, is what I'm saying. I
No, yeah, Brian should have told you that last year, we met with you.
And we plow the park road anyway there, Jim. Usually all winter, we keep that open. And so we would have to plow the parking lot for it. But that's the only, you know, like you said, snow removal would be the biggest thing for us there, probably.
Well, I I just hate to see the other building go, I guess, is my point, because I just, to me, I would like to have a plan to keep keep the building and and be able to place this somewhere in the park. I'm talking about the new building, still place it in the park, but still keep the other building. I don't know what anybody else's thoughts on it, that is, but.
Well, it's a possibility. You gotta keep on three buildings and, you know, not that the the shelters take that much. This 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 new shelter would probably have to have if they're gonna rent it out, we're gonna have to find somebody to what do you say, clean it, take care of it, or whatever, you know, all year round, where we don't have to do that with the other shelters, you know, you know, five, six months out of the year, so. Will be a little bit more expense to the city, but as far as, you know, keeping that shelter and building another one, I don't know if that's up to us or if that's up to the park board.
And I don't want to step on Kenny's toes, but if if the Legion works out a deal with you guys, Brian and I have talked about it, we're actually gonna put a back in the storage area, we're actually gonna build a separate room for the Legion's stuff that has, it's under lock and key, so people can't mess with that. So just letting you know that.
Alright, well, we got our update from Dan here. Anybody got any questions or comments or concerns there with Dan?
Yeah, I'd like to echo kind of what Jim said. It'd be nice to be able to keep that shelter if we could. The only other question I'd have is, is, you know, do we at some point as a council vote on whether or not we want to tear down a park building and build this or because it sounds like it sounds like Todd's ready to go as soon as he's ready to, as soon as he's done with the fields. It sounds like that's happened before our next council meeting, and I don't see an agenda item that has us voting on approving this project.
Well, actually, it was supposed to have been taken down last fall. But he didn't get around to it. So so that was the spring, so. Because when when Brian came to your meeting last June, I'm I know that he told me that he told you that we're taking down that building and putting up a new one. And he said nobody had any objection to it, so.
Okay, well, we've never voted on actually approving this project. So I guess at some point it'd be nice to vote on that.
Yeah, I don't know things there's no taxpayer money in it. Is that the park board's deal or is that your deal or, but I don't know?
Yeah, I don't know, maybe maybe Kyle can chime in. I mean, if it's a park board deal, then I suppose not, but it'd be ideal, given it's a city building that we chime in on it.
Yeah.
You there, Kyle?
Yeah, I'm here. I guess I'm not exactly sure what the interaction has been in the past on this kind of stuff. For example, like the splash pad, the Economic Development Group kind of spearheaded raising the money for that. That was prior to me working as city attorney. Did they ever vote on as the city approving the construction of the splash pad?
Pretty sure we did.
Okay, and then, I mean, it's obviously city property, so at the end of the day, the council should have final say. But a lot of times, it seems like the park board is kind of, I guess, handle their own decision-making on what goes up or happens out there. So I, you know, I guess final say should be the city, since it's city property, but at the same time, I'm not sure on this project, since Brian started on it a year ago, and I remember him coming to the meeting, that it's the time to step in and change their plan.
Well, I don't think he was trying to step in and change the plan. I think we're just trying to get an opportunity to approve it and ask questions and you know, follow follow procedures that are in place.
Yeah.
Brian, Brian, I looked at a lot of different areas out of the park to put it. The reason we chose there, we did, for one thing, Brian said to get rid of that building and put up a new one was beneficial. And the other thing was, we wanted to be able to pour the less concrete that we had to. We didn't want to spend fifty thousand dollars in extra concrete, you know, to get to a new shelter somewhere. So that just seemed to be the most reasonable place. So we did look at a lot of different areas, so.
Okay.
So what do we want to do here, then? Do we want to talk to Brian? Or do we want to move forward with this project? Or would you rather wait till we talk to Brian with this?
Well, Jim, I I'm like Levi. I I think we need to prove it like we did the splash pad. I think that it needs to be approved, because that, at the end of the day, it's gonna be the city that manages it. I mean, we're we're gonna be, if when the snow blows, we're gonna be the one, the city guys are gonna be out there pushing snow. We're gonna be responsible for it, so. And I just, I I would And I just, I, I would feel a lot better. Like Levi, I would feel a lot better if, if we put it on the agenda for a meeting to, to either approve it or disapprove it.
Yeah, I don't know why you guys didn't do that last year, I, I guess, I thought it was done, I, I don't know.
I did not read those minutes, I know it was in the minutes of the June meeting. I did not read those minutes to see if it was approved. At that time, I don't know, uh, I guess I'd have to go back and look and see what the minutes. But um, maybe. We should table this till next month. Um, and then put it on the agenda to approve this. Is that what we wanna do here?
Yeah, and I think, you know, have, have, you know, final plans, what's gonna be there, and, you know, how, how this is, how this is gonna work. I mean, it sounds like we're just tearing down that building, the parking lot's gonna be added in, it sounds like the water line's being put in from, from the main, so that'll be taken care of. I'm not sure if there's any other, any other things that need to be addressed as part of it.
No, we've got everything taken care of.
Do we have any idea once the project starts how long it would take to complete?
That's a good question, Jim, that's about like anything else. We haven't put our P O number in through Spawning Rose yet, because he still thinks the price of lumber is still gonna come down.
Okay.
So we're just kinda waiting on that a little bit, um, and he wasn't quite sure how long it'd take getting materials on that. But by the time we got the footings done and everything else, you know, it'd be a while anyway, so. Our goal is to have it done, you know, by this fall, so.
Okay.
What, what's the impact if we would vote on it the next meeting? Because that would mean Todd can't start on anything until May, or probably May tenth, I'm not sure in the next meeting is.
Right. That's, we just have to tell him that he can't start it. Yep.
All right, so why don't we um. Just table this until the next meeting, until uh. Maybe talk to Brian, Brian Caspary, and uh. At that time, uh, either approve or disapprove of the shelter, and I don't, I mean. I guess I'm a little bit, I just thought that uh. We were gonna go ahead with this project, but right now, it sounds like we're gonna put it on hold, so that'll give you guys a little bit more time, Dan, to get your uh. Maybe your quotes and your bids and stuff together too.
No.
Okay, anybody have anything else for Dan? All right, well, thanks, Dan.
Yep.
And we'll move on then, and uh, next is Kenny Richmond, Kenny, are you here?
I am, Steve.
And uh, what do you have for us tonight, Kenny?
Well, I've got nothing particular for you, except we were waiting on you people to discuss what kind of. Charges you thought you would need for us to rent that place out there.
I think um, we're gonna have a little time to discuss that, Kenny, I mean, cuz uh. This isn't gonna be done, but uh, you have uh, talked to uh. Uh, Brian Caspary then about this?
No, just to Dan.
Just to Dan, okay.
And. And to you and Dan, when you come down to the Legion, that's the only discussion I've ever had.
Okay. I guess. We don't have to get in a big hurry about this, since we're not. But um. I don't know, I guess.
This is something you gentlemen can talk about if you want, and uh. Maybe myself and another Legionnaire will come to your next meeting and meet in person.
That might be the best thing, cuz right now, we don't know where we're at on the shelter, so.
Well, you're, you're committed to it to the extent that it's gonna have to be built.
Well, exactly right, they got their, they got their funding, they've got. Everything you need, probably gonna be built, right.
The main thing is for you to decide where you're gonna let it to be built.
Right, and I think, uh, like I said, I think we need to. Get with uh, Brian Caspary and the Economic Development Group and uh. Um, come up with a plan here if uh. If we don't tear down the other shelter, so.
Well, basically, this was kinda my idea, but I don't know if uh. We get rid of the building or not, we might, there's a few things that have changed, and some of the guys might decide they wanna stay, so I don't really know what's all gonna. Transpire yet, Steve. So.
Okay.
I mean, what uh, you know, we talked about making that new shelter square on the end. I think that's about the only addition that um. Dan was talking about, so, i- if we go or don't go, won't make any difference, you still will have storage space.
Right.
Okay.
He made that pretty clear, that he was gonna give you guys a, if. The Legion decides to go this route, that you will have your own storage area, so that would be, that'll be good.
That would be adequate back there, okay, well, let's plan on that then, Steve, we'll, myself and another will be at your next meeting in person.
Hey, hey, real quick though, I, I, it would be interesting just to hear kinda what you guys are thinking, cuz I mean, I've heard rumors, but I haven't heard specifically what, what you guys are looking for. Just so we're a little more prepared to speak to it next time.
Well, we kinda thought we were gonna go out there, and we do have a little funding, if that needed to be, we would uh, contribute it towards uh, that. Uh. Dollar and cents wise, I can't, I don't have any authority to come up with that, that would be up to the group.
I'm not, we're concerned about the, the dollars and cents, I'm more just, you know, what are you, are you guys looking to use it every day, you looking to use it once a week?
The Legionnaires, we could get by with one night a week, or one night a month. Then, but the Boy Scouts, and I would hope you wouldn't think too hu-. High, would think highly of them and let them have it for nothing, they use it Monday nights for about two hours. And then, we do have the card players that uh, meet Monday through Saturday, uh, eight to ten thirty every morning, but uh. Really, that's not the Legion's problem.
Okay, so uh, just, just so I'm aware, it sounds like you guys are looking to transition all the activities you're currently having at the Legion. To this new community center building.
If we can do it with a reasonable price, yes, but. The Legion itself only needs it for one night a month, uh, Levi.
Okay. And then, and then the Boy Scouts, and then the, and then the card players, they would decide.
Every, every uh, every week, every morning during the week, but like I said, the. Card players are not affiliated anyway at all with the Legion, but if it can be worked out that we could afford to. Let them use it, we would.
Okay. Well, that helps, that helps, Kenny, I, I appreciate that, cuz I, up to this point, a lot of this has just been hearsay, and I haven't heard it directly from anyone yet.
No, uh. I hope I've explained it well for you, well enough for you, but uh, like I say. If it would come down to it, the Legion would be only using it one night a month.
Okay.
But uh, there's the other things that are involved with it, and I would, like I say, if. We can come up with something reasonable, we might consider incorporating it all, so.
Okay.
Okay, thanks Levi, anything, anybody got another question, well, there are some things that uh. If we would go out there, there, we've got the stools, we've got the refrigerators, the tables and chairs, that we would contribute it from the. Our existing building and take out there, so that would help reduce some of that cost too.
Okay, that, that's good to know. Hey, one other thing, Ca- Kenny, why, why I got you here, just cuz once again, I'd like to hear it from the individual, what's the plan with the current Legion, and is it to sell it, is it to? Tear it down, is it the?
Well. Uh, we aren't planning on tearing it down, we do have several opportunities, we have uh, one or two people who are interested in buying it.
Okay.
And uh, we've had one group, and I'm looking for another group, maybe to rent it, and if we can get it, rent it out, we just might stay.
Okay.
So, but the, you know, everything is, just, just like you people, everything is in, up in the air, you, we just don't know everything either yet. So, and we had kinda looked into the co-op building, because there's not much business going through there. But uh, they are not interested in selling it at this time, but they did say, in the future, if they got. To that point, the Legion would be high on our list to sell it to, so.
Okay, that's good to know.
Yeah, okay, thank you for your consideration, guys.
All right, thank you, Kenny, anybody else have anything for Kenny Richmond? Nobody, okay, all right, thanks, Kenny.
Okay, thanks, Steve, doing good.
Yep.
All right, now we have, uh, next, we have u- utility billing hearings and uh. Application for waiver of charges, if any requested, and we do have one, uh, Mike Blake and his apartments, yeah, I think it was in his um. Uh, laundry room had a broken pipe, and uh, he would like to get his uh, charges adjusted. So.
The amount of the original bill was four hundred and sixteen dollars. With the adjustment using our policy, his um, new total bill would be one hundred and fifty dollars ninety-five cents.
Okay, does anybody wanna entertain a motion to uh. Adjust those charges for Mike Blake?
Clarification, just, just for, for my knowledge is, when we do the, the policy, is it, is it per water meter per address, or is it per homeowner?
Per address.
Okay, I just wanna make sure what the policy was. Okay, then yes, per our policy, I'll make a motion, we approve that.
All seconds, Bart.
All right, and uh, vote by Rod.
I.
Ron?
I.
Jim?
I.
Bart?
I.
And Levi?
I.
All right, motion carries there. Uh, next, we have nuisance abatement hearings, and I don't know, do we have any, I don't think so, do we?
None.
None, and uh. We'll move on to old business and uh. Do we have any old business we wanted to discuss, the only thing I guess I really have is how we coming on the. FEMA Homeland Security deal there, we making any headway on that at all? Deb?
Well, um. Two of the projects have been submitted, the to-be-completed project. Um, we're working on trying to figure out how to do the bids for that.
Okay. And uh, what else, do we have anything, Deb, for old business?
Nothing on the agenda.
Okay, uh, and then discussion with ambulance coordinator Brittany Rogers, Brittany, are you there?
I'm here. Um, so, for March, we had nineteen calls for service that we attended. Um, on our paramedic license, we are still waiting for approval on our CSA application, which is our ability to. Um, hold and maintain narcotics at our station and use them in our ambulance. Um, since there had never been a CSA application filed for Clarence Ambulance before. Um, everything as far as past history, um, for anything that the ambulance might have had sanctions against it. Had to be reported, um, so that brought up some stuff from a few years ago, so that's kind of holding us up. On moving forward on our paramedic license, um. So, uh, right now, we're kind of just in limbo, waiting for that to come through. Once that gets approved, then we can get our drug boxes filled and um. Apply for our inspection with the state, um, and then they'll come down and make sure that we have all of the equipment that we need to move forward with our paramedic license. And once that's done, then they will update our license to paramedic level, and we can start running at that. Um, our medical director Catherine Hurst is gonna come down, do some hands-on training, make sure everybody is up to date and up to speed. Um, that'll be running as a paramedic, or are an exception at a paramedic level on our service. Go through um, medications, make sure everyone understands how to use them, what they're used for, um, and appropriate dosages. And then, um, we do have a fundraiser coming up that um, we're doing through our ambulance board to help cover the cost of going to. Paramedic level for the equipment that we use, so we'll be doing a spaghetti dinner. On April thirtieth from five to eight PM, we're gonna offer a drive-through for that, and then very limited seating options. If the weather's nice, then we'll put tables outside, that could open up more seating options for people who don't. Um, wanna get spaghetti to go. Um, so that, the flyers will be posted around town this coming week, and then um. Hopefully in the Tipton Conservative next week. Um, Mary Lou Wine Coop uh, was an RN exception for us at an advanced DMT level. Um, she's just driving for us now, um, she had stopped. Um, doing patient care at the end of the year, so as far as I know, I don't think that we have to. Vote on her for a driver, since we never officially took her off the roster, um, I'm not sure how that works, so I'll let you guys. Decide on whether or not you need to vote on her for a driver or not, but. Um, and then the only other thing that I have is, um. They voted at our last meeting to go ahead and start paying for meetings and trainings again. Um, and the amount that they chose was fifteen dollars for meetings, trainings. Um, so I guess we just have to. Have council approve that. I don't know.
That's included later on in the agenda under the resolution for pay.
Okay. So anybody have any questions for uh, Brittany? All right, and I guess uh, with Mary. Wine Coop, just moving to a driver, we probably don't have to uh, do anything with that, do we, Deb?
I don't know, what do you think, Kyle?
Couldn't need to, as long as her pay's adjusted.
Okay. All right, I think nobody else says anything for Brittany, we'll move on. And uh, next, we have a discussion with library director Nikki Shield, Nikki, are you there?
And I got an email from Nikki today, which I forwarded to the members of the council. That she wasn't going to be able to make the meeting, but she did send along a report, would you like me to read that?
Uh, no, we all got it on an email?
Yes.
Okay, I haven't got my email, so I'll check that, anybody else?
Basically, she said that their circulation's up, they're getting ready to put the new shelves in, they're getting a couple of new computers. They're working on the summer reading program, and she finished a new website for the library, and it's up and running.
Okay, I know Steve uh, unloaded some new shelving for the other day, so she's got some things going on there. With that, we'll move on to Fire Chief Randy Burke, Randy, are you there?
Trying to.
Yep, you're there, Randy, we got you.
You got me?
Yep, we got you.
The only thing I got, you know, we're gonna pour concrete probably next week or so in the building. The other thing is uh, insurance on the trucks, we're working to move a, a premium up on, on the. To lower our insurance. Go up to like a thousand dollars, and save us like four hundred bucks a year for insurance on the trucks, fire trucks.
You mean the deductible?
Deductible, yep. Currently, we have no deductible, and uh, trying to lower our insurance costs, um. I'll work with uh, Niermeyer on that, um, hopefully we can save. Four hundred bucks a year. The uh, cost of insurance for the fire department is up to seventy-two hundred and forty-some dollars. And that's a. And that's a third of our budget, just trying to see what we can do to keep things in line. So, uh, putting, uh, deductible up there, it could save us four, four hundred bucks. Should push them a little harder to see if they can save us a little more, but that's what I have for you.
All right, all right. I think, uh, like you said there, Randy, just keep working with Niermeier and see what you can work out.
I'm sure we'll be able to come to approval. Um, we haven't any claims as far as I know in thirty, thirty-one years. When, when the costs come up like this, and, and they say it's with everything, with the ratio and everything, but when, when, when the budget starts hitting like this, we gotta look at for different spots to conserve money and I think, I think the thousand, thousand for, for, uh, coverage, we have money saved back. We should be able to cover everything, so.
All right, sounds great, sounds great. Anybody got anything for Randy? All right, thanks, Randy.
Okay, thanks a bunch.
All right, we'll move on and have, uh, discussion with police chief Rick Scott. Rick, are you there?
Yep, I'm here.
All right, what do you have for us tonight?
Oh, I submitted my, uh, monthly report to you guys, if, if you have any questions on that. Um, also, um, just to let you guys know, I've been, uh, sitting on, uh, uh, on Main Street there, trying to slow the speeders down and I'm gonna probably start hitting it really hard. Uh, the weather's getting nice, uh, on, uh, the, the Main Street area and, and on Seventh Avenue. Coming into town, uh, I've taken some. Just hold a second. Um, been taking some complaints on, uh, the speeding on Seventh Avenue and, uh, uh, so I got some places to sit down there. Some residents have gave me, uh, permission to sit in their driveways. So that's where I'll be kind of focusing on some traffic enforcement here this, this month too, so. Um, the car's been ordered and all the equipment, they said ten to fifteen weeks he'll be here. Um, other than that, um, I don't have anything unless somebody has something for me.
All right, anybody got anything for Rick?
Hey, Rick, maybe real quicks, um, all the computers, probes, everything been solved since we were down there working on that one day?
Yep, everything, everything's working good, uh. Um, I think I found out where them other, the files went, so we'll, uh, I was messing around with it and it was in another drive, so I could get back to them if I had to.
Okay, great. And you're using different reporting software now, right?
Yeah, I, um, um, am using, uh, Trax. Uh, they have a U C R form that I've been using, so that other thing, uh, is kind of put away for, I, I don't need it unless it extremely have to, so that's what I do with things on.
Sounds good.
This is Ron.
Yeah.
Did they get that new sign coming into town up? So you know what the speed limit is starting at the end of town?
Uh, there, yeah, there's a sign, there's a sign up there, goes from fifty-five, y- y- yeah, by Casey's.
No, no, uh, come, coming in south on the blacktop there.
Uh, there's the other one that says it's twenty-five.
Yeah, that one sign was broke off for a while. I, I come in there and I forget to watch now, it was back up again. Uh, that's the only thing I have, otherwise.
I, I was gonna also ask you guys up, uh, who, uh, usually takes care of the Seventh Avenue? The roads, is that a, is that a county, is that a county road?
Unfortunately, it's the city's road.
Okay. We, we wish it was a county road.
Yeah.
No, I just, I just noticed them, some big holes in it and I just, I didn't know who took care of it because I was gonna check into that, so. That's all I got.
We did, we did a bunch of patching on it this last week, so.
Okay.
Better than it was, it's not perfect yet, so.
Nope, no problem.
Yeah, there isn't, isn't too much we can do with Seventh right now there, Rick. I mean, that ought to slow them down anyway.
Well, yeah.
All right, anybody else got anything for Rick? All right, if, uh, nothing for Rick, we'll move on with, uh, planning and zoning administrator Steven. Steven, are you there?
I'm here. We had, uh, five building permits. Um, solar array, porch, carport, fence and a deck. Um, I didn't approve the deck on Fourth Avenue yet. I gotta ask the guy what his plans are, the, the sketch that he had on the building permit wasn't very well good, so. That's about it for that.
All right, so just waiting to approve on the, the one, then, and everything else, you approved the other ones?
Yep.
Okay, all right, then, public works discussion with Steve in. Steve, what do you have for us?
Oh, I got a lot. Um, so I'll start off by saying that, uh, they had a resident in town that had a sewer problem. And they dug it up, or they, I, I take that back, they didn't dig it up, they videoed it. And they got ten foot out from the house and they found a tile tied into the sewer lateral that was running a quarter inch pole. And they have no idea where it goes or what it does. Make a long story short, he's gonna dig it, his lateral up and replace the whole thing and sounds like he's either gonna put a, uh, outdoor sump in for that tile or take it into his house and put a pit, sump pit in his house, so. But I guess what I'm getting at, I would almost guess that there's a lot of that going on in town by the way we've have to pump water and whatnot, so. And that brings me to this, um, I had Sarah, right, I talked to Sarah and she had already told us that our first step was to get an ordinance in place for the town. And she sent me a, uh, ordinance that the city of uh, Oakfield, Wisconsin has. And it might be easier just having Deb email everybody this, kind of look through it. It's basically, I think our ordinance pretty much covers about all of it except for the, uh, deficiency part of it. Um, I can, I can hit on a little bit of it here. Um, city will inspect all connections to the public sewer system, basically camera, all the laterals in town. Any, any deficiencies must be repaired by a contractor, which includes replacement of lateral installation of sump pit or drainage tile. Um, repair options are open cut, slip lining, pipe bursting, or any other method allowed by code. A tape must be provided to the repairers after it's all completed. Um, sanitary sewer television refusal fee, so if somebody won't let us video their sewer lateral, it's fifty dollars a month against the owner that refuses. Fee will be imposed thirty days after request televised, fee continues until consent is given. And then, uh, the next step after that is you go to the circuit court and get an inspection warrant. So I don't know if that's the route we want to go. This is just kind of one that she sent me. I asked her to see if she had one or but I think we need to do something. I mean, we had to pump water Sunday up on Pyatt Street. I mean, that was, that wasn't even a hard rain, it was a long rain, about three inches, but obviously, if there's one house in town that's got it, there's probably a lot of houses in town that have it. So. And the other thing that she, uh, sent me was, uh, so it's, uh, it's kind of like they do in the country. So if somebody sells a property, a house or anything, and this is actually from the city of Baxter, Iowa, they have this. So it's a time of sale inspection. So if a house is sold, the public works or representative of the city goes in and they inspect all of the storm drains, ditches, or not ditches, but storm drains, uh, I'm on the, I skipped ahead of myself. So it basically had, uh, sanitary sewer system, um, downspouts, catch basins, rough drains, yard drains, footing drains, interior, make sure the sump pump isn't tied in. And if there's any deficiencies that the city finds, the person selling it has to fix them before they sell the house. Which probably isn't a bad thing. But and that, that actually is an ordinance the city of Baxter has, so. Any thoughts on any of that?
Uh, I like the second ordinance. That seems like something that we can do immediately and fairly easily, that's pretty low impact, but has big, big potential for reward to solve our problem.
Right, yeah.
The first one you read, I like it, but it feels like we probably need to give it a little more. I don't know, I mean, I suppose we have to do something, but that's a, that's a pretty crony ordinance, it's gonna probably get some of us, some of our houses burned down.
Yeah, I'm not gonna disagree with that.
Well.
The thing of it is though, if we don't go after it, it's, we're either gonna pay for it trying to take care of it in town, or we're gonna pay for upgrading the sewer plant, so. You know, it's a, I, I guess what, basically what the decision the city council needs to make is, are we willing to pay for some of this, or, I mean, basically how this thing reads, it's all up to the homeowner, all of it. And that will probably get your house burnt tomorrow if you put it in.
Exactly, it sound, this sounds like something really good for, for the next council term.
Yeah.
Well, I like your second one there, uh, Steve, I think that would be, uh, inexpensive for us. Um, the first one's gonna be expensive. We know that. And, uh, I'm thinking we do need to do something, like you said, if, if a house is sold, that it needs to have the, uh, uh, system inspected.
Right.
Uh, and that would be, like you said, alls we gotta do is make an ordinance, we don't, is, there's no cost involved there. That might help a little bit, but we know we got a problem here in town. So whatever it is, whether we have to, um, film these laterals looking for, um, um, tiles that are tapped in, if we have to do it, we have to do it, because we can't keep going the way we are. I mean, sooner or later, like you said, we're either gonna put another lagoon in or we're gonna, or something, you know what I'm saying? I mean,
Right.
Wh- where do you, uh?
I mean.
I think you're gonna, we're gonna spend the money either sooner or later, we're gonna have to spend the money, it's gonna happen.
Well, the D N R is not gonna keep giving us extensions, that's all I'm saying.
Exactly.
They're eventually gonna put their foot down and say, okay, you guys are either going to a continuous discharge with disinfection, or you're gonna put another holding cell in out there so you can take care of the oil that you have. But that still doesn't take care of having to go set up pumps and run pumps. I mean, even if you put another cell in there, that's not taking care of that's just giving you more capacity to hold water. So basically all it's doing is giving you your hundred and eighty days of hold time.
What about putting die down, uh, eavespouts to see if, how many are tapped in there too? Do we want it? That would be inexpensive too, wouldn't it?
Well, yeah, I mean, our ordinance already lets us do that.
We need to do it then.
Right.
Let's, you know, because we got, we got a problem. And, uh, how are we gonna solve it, you know?
Basically, the, our ordinance pretty much mirrors this, except for the imposing, I, I guess except for cammering, which if it's possible to camera it from the main, we can do that. But most of that, you're not gonna be able to do, because most of these sewers go out from the house and they drop. Because your main is ten feet deep and you're, you know what I'm saying? You're, so there's a drop on them, so you cannot get a camera up them from the main on most of them, so. But and that, that's gonna be the biggest challenge is probably getting into people's houses to be able to camera their lateral. For one thing, they, they aren't gonna want you to camera their lateral, because they probably know they got stuff going on and but and then if you start throwing a fifty dollar a month fee on top of them, if they don't want you to, they're gonna scream. But.
Well, they wanna, they wonder why they got water in their basement. And they got, they got, uh, downspouts or whatever tied in, they're their own worst enemy in my book, you know, I mean, so.
I mean, the person that found this tile tied in, younger, younger couple, he, he had no idea it was there. Two thirds of the houses in town don't know what's tied into their sewer laterals.
Exactly right. People, people don't know. I mean, what's underground, they just bought the house, they don't know what
Exactly.
what's under there, so.
The only way you're gonna find it is to run a camera down it, you know, it's
Well, uh, go ahead, Jim.
Uh, I was just gonna say that I, I'd say just give the ordinances what you got, have Kyle take a look at them and just we'll get it done the, within the next council.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I was just gonna say that, Jim, that, you know, maybe the best way to do it, I mean, certainly I think the second one is great, but I think the first one, I think we start getting written up, we put out the folks, say, hey, we're gonna consider this as, as a, as a new resolution for the town and let folks have some opportunity to speak to it and eventually just, you know, enforce it. I mean, I, I guess it doesn't require that we immediately say people to pay that day. I mean, can, we can give people some time to say, hey, within three years or within two years, you gotta make the fix.
Right.
I mean, that's what, that's what I say, have Kyle take a look at it and kind of draft it to our needs, you know?
I mean, I, uh, I sent out an email, we kind of talked about this before Steve, I think was hired as the city guy. Uh, I think it was last June, where I had kind of went through a couple other cities and sent out a few options with what they had done. Uh, also, and I, I sent that to Deb again today, because we were kind of talking about it. So I don't know if that, you know, if you want to mirror one of those two cities, I kind of liked what they did.
Okay.
I was here then, Kyle. I think you sent that to me too.
Okay, well, that's, I think it was, I think it was Cedar Falls, and I can't remember what the other one was.
Yeah.
But they essentially put out the notice and gave
But they essentially put out the notice and gave people, you know, six months or a year to do it on their own. And if they didn't do it on their own, then the fine kicked in. Either I had to call the city to make an appointment. Or you had to provide proof you had done it with an independent contractor. And if it wasn't done within a certain amount of time, then the fines kicked in. So essentially, they called them, make an appointment. You know, or, or tell them their availability, and then the city guys would be able to go camera it or whatever.
Yep. But the, the thing of it is, though, we're probably gonna have to contract with, with, uh, Roto-Rooter or somebody.
Yeah.
And they aren't gonna be real cheap if they come out here and do one line one week and another line another week. You know, if we could get a, like a block of people to commit. And they could go down the block. You're gonna get a way better price on the cameras.
Oh, and that's maybe you just say we're gonna be sending out notices when your inspection time is. You know. And send them to a block at a time or two blocks at a time. On a given day, they'll be there from eight to five and you need to be available.
Right, yep.
But I, yeah, I, I guess on the time of transfer deal you were talking about, my question would be, and I'm sure it's working somehow. But when we do, so every single property in the state of Iowa that transfers. Is accompanied by what's called a groundwater ha, groundwater hazard statement. That's what Steve's talking about. So if you're in the country. They inspect your septic system at the time of transfer, and if you don't have a, basically inspection that has passed. A certified inspector's review, then the recorder's office won't record your deed, so you literally can't sell your house. But if you have a city property, you're checking on the box. I'm served by city sewer and city water. And the recorder just records the deed. So my question would be if a property's selling in the city. Who's monitoring, you know, the recorder's office isn't gonna block those deeds for us? In which case, how do we even know besides them telling Deb, hey, cancel my water, I'm moving out of town? At which point, they're not, you know, the seller of the property doesn't care what Clarence does to try to chase them around. They're just gonna leave town.
Yeah.
If you're, you're selling your house in Clarence and moving to Chicago. You don't care what Clarence is saying about inspecting your sewer line or tacking three hundred dollars on your water bill. Or whatever, you're just leaving. And then you're gonna run into problems with your buyers.
Well, it does, it does say on this, property owner shall request a time of sale inspection by filing an application. With the superintendent or representative of the superintendent, the fee required for this inspection. And any reinspection shall be set by resolution of the city council. Upon successful inspection, the superintendent or representative of the superintendent will issue a certificate, certificate of compliance. The certificate of compliance shall be attached to the groundwater hazard statement and presented to the recorder. Along with all other required transfer documents.
So maybe they somehow got their recorder's office to take part in this and block. Their transfers that don't have that certificate attached.
That's what.
So we'd have to check, we'd have to check with our recorder's office on whether or not they'll do that.
Yeah.
Cause that'd be great. If that, that, that solved it, that'd be your best way possible.
Right. So somehow the city of Baxter got it. It has to go through the recorder, or it gets recorded, so.
Yeah, but that's, I'm saying they must be having it work somehow, but I was saying, you know, on a normal basis, if you're leaving town. And the recorder's gonna accept your deed, because you, you certify I'm city sewer, city water, we got no way to stop them.
Right.
So if the recorder, if you can get the recorder's office to request that or require that on all Clarence transfers, then you got something there.
Mm-hmm.
So I guess what we have to do is just check with the recorder's office and see if, uh, they would go along with that. And that would solve that problem. If they don't, then what do you do? You, you, if they, if they just say, no, we're not gonna do this. Then what, then what do you do then, Kyle? I mean, basically.
Well, that, then that method is not gonna work. It's gonna be the, you know, you got six months to let us inspect or do the inspection, or we're coming on this day or whatever. But that's, yeah, or like Steve said, I think you send out a notice to the town, Roto-Rooter's coming this day, this day, this day, and this day. If you're not available, make it work, or we're gonna kick the fine in at this time, you know? But the time of transfer deal, like I'm saying, this, if your recorder's office isn't gonna help you, that method won't work.
Very.
And I've done a lot of closings in, in towns all over the state, and I've never, you know, I wouldn't know which town has an ordinance that would require that. Until I send the deed to get recorded, and I've never run into an issue with the recorder's office. And us not doing a time of transfer inspection on a property in town. So Baxter, I, I don't know how they're doing it, but I've never run into that anywhere else.
Yeah. We can still put it in there for plus.
Well, yeah, you're gonna get your people that are, you know, if you're selling your house on Eighth Avenue to move to Sixth Avenue. We got you on the hook, because you're still gonna have a water bill every month.
Right.
But if you're moving from Eighth Avenue to Chicago. You're good luck.
Yep.
All right.
To decide, you know, as far as Jim says, you know, getting an ordinance together, I guess we kind of need to decide which route we're looking to go.
Well. I don't know. What's everybody's feelings on this? Like you said, I, uh. I would like to see if we could work with the recorder's office first. That'd make it, that'd make it simple if they would.
But I can talk to Melissa Bonson and see if that's something they'll do.
I think maybe that's, uh, that'd be our first, first choice anyway.
Yeah, that would be nice, because it's just over time gonna fix your problem, and it's gonna put the burden on the, the seller of the property each time they're getting ready to sell.
Right.
It's not gonna be an immediate fix by any means. I'm sure the average house in Clarence turns over, you know, once every twenty years or whatever.
Very. Or if you own a lot of properties in Clarence, you're not gonna be real happy. And you're trying to sell them.
Well.
Yeah, I, I like that method if we can get Melissa on board.
Why don't, um. So what do we do then, Kyle? You check with her then? Is that what we wanna do, or?
Yeah, I can talk to her and, and let you guys know what she says, and then we can. I guess go from there, but that's. Yeah, I guess before I put together an ordinance, I need a little more input on. What we wanted to say as far as. I can resend out those ones from the other cities that I had. To, I don't know.
Well, I can email you this, this one that she sent me today, Kyle, and you can look at it.
Yeah, that, I mean, if you guys like that one, then we can kind of mirror that.
Yeah.
I guess I'd, I'd like to kind of put a couple of these other ones in front of you and have us decide as a council which direction we wanna go. And maybe do that at next meeting and then have it ready for the second meeting or something, you know, when we're all together.
Yeah, I think you're right.
I would say the Wisconsin one's kind of extreme. But, I mean, while I was reading through it, I'm just like, holy crap. Surprised that town council's even alive yet, but.
I remember thinking the Cedar Falls one seemed pretty fair.
Yeah. Yeah, I, you know, I totally forgot that you emailed me those. I remember looking at those and that Cedar Falls one did. Seemed like it was a pretty good deal.
And I sent that, yeah, I sent them to Deb again today when we were kind of on the topic, and I didn't have time to read it real close again, but.
And I can just forward to the council tomorrow if I didn't do that already today. I can forward Kyle's email to the council tomorrow. So everyone can see what the ordinances will look like.
All right, then maybe it's next meeting, we can. Choose which route we wanna go, then we'll have a better understanding.
Yep, so I will reach out to Melissa and see if that's something we can do through them.
All right.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't really think that would add a whole lot more on the quarters deal. I mean. Basically, another paragraph, maybe? I don't know.
Well, I'm saying, I guess the problem would be that we'd run into is we'd have these other attorneys that complete a sale. Thinking that the standard DNR time of transfer inspection that says city sewer, city water is gonna suffice. They send the documents in to get recorded, and then Melissa's literally gonna have to give every single one of them a rejection letter. That says, oh, no, you know, Clarence, this special requirement. Well, the problem is at that point, your seller. Has already thought they've sold their house and moved to Texas or wherever. And now you've got Melissa holding the deed, you know, for the sale that actually didn't happen. And we've got this attorney in Cedar Rapids that's trying to scramble to figure out what needs to be done, and you've got this innocent buyer not knowing it was needed. That now is living in the house and whatever, so.
Yeah.
And that's why I said, like, you know, if I ran into a closing or did a closing in a far off city. And all of a sudden, they're calling me a week later saying, oh, you didn't give us our certificate for the inspection. I'd be thinking, oh, God, what do I, you know, what do I do now?
Very, yeah.
Well. I don't know. I guess you, you, there's more than one way to look at this, I guess. You know, um. If you're a realtor, you better know that you're gonna have to have an inspection. You know what I'm saying?
So many people don't use a Realtor. You know, that's, that's the problem is these people.
I got you, yeah, right.
Like me, you know, I'd figure it out. Russell's gonna figure it out. The Tipton attorneys will figure it out. When you get some guy from Cedar Rapids. You know, or something like that, he's not gonna know that Clarence requires the, this inspection or the cambering.
Well, it's gotta be the same thing in Ba, in Baxter then too.
Yeah, that's, I wonder how they're, like I said, I've never run into that before.
Well, maybe, maybe we can get ahold of the city of Baxter and ask, ask them how they're doing it.
Yeah, or maybe Melissa, you know, at the recorder's office, maybe she's. Dealt with it, or they've got something else they can do, or I don't know.
Yeah.
So, yeah, let's, let's look into our options here and then maybe discuss further next month after we've all read these other cities ordinances. And then decide which plan of action we wanna take.
All right. What else do you have for us, Steve?
Uh, the last thing I have is storm drains, ditches and street edges. Our, our streets took a hard hit this winter. And I think a lot of it has to do with the water that doesn't get off the streets. Because all the ditches are full and the storm drains are half buried and. Water has nowhere to go. So. Me and Steve drove around. I was kind of showing him stuff and. Probably not gonna be real popular with people in this deal either, because you're gonna be tearing up grass and city right away. But. I think it needs to happen. I mean, it's, there's, there's storm drains. All you can see is the top inch of them. And ditches are full. So. I think we need to go after it. And to do that, probably gonna need a tooth bucket on our skid loader. We could probably do a lot of it ourselves with a skid loader with a tooth bucket. I think we're, we'd probably have to either hire someone or rent a mini hoe for. A few weeks to do some of it, but I think a lot of it we could probably do ourself. But.
Yeah, you and I. You and I went around and we looked at this and, you know, it just happens over the years, and you don't notice it. That, you know, we have no, what do you say, drainage waters just sitting there? And so. Uh, just for the council, I, you know, I went around to Stephen, I was on board with him that. Um, it's not gonna be real popular, but I think it's something that we need to do is. Is, uh, dig, dig, dig these ditches out so we can get the water to drain. So I don't know what everybody's feelings are on this.
I don't, I don't know that's gonna help our waste sanitary problem much. I can't hurt it, you know?
I was gonna say, I can't hurt it. It might help it. It might help it a little bit anyway. It'd be, it'd be another. Inexpensive fix, you know, if it worked.
Right.
Is there any way in that deal in, cause I'm assuming we would just go up with our, with our skid loader bucket and start digging it out. Is there any way to. Warn a homeowner, hey, you need to get your ditch cleaned up and dealt with, or we're gonna come deal with it?
I mean, you could send letters out and see what happens.
Well, the reason I say is there might, there's some, some folks and maybe like, hey, you know, don't mess my lawn. Like, if you want it done, I'll go figure out a way to do it. So it doesn't have a bunch of blade marks and everything in my yard. I'm not sure if you're gonna do it a nice way or not.
Well, basically between the sidewalk and the streets right away anyway, so you can do whatever you want. But yeah, you're not gonna, you're gonna. It's, it's gonna be about like ordinance to video your ladder.
You guys, you're full of great news today, Steve.
We're not making any friends tonight, are we?
I, I, I don't know if it, do we think that'd be worth it, or just gotta do it and just deal with the consequence of people being a little upset about it? I don't want the best.
I would say have, have, uh. Steve try and do it, like you said, with the tooth bucket. For the fact is, is if you, uh. If you say to the homeowner, say, hey, uh, can you help us take care of this? The chances are that they're, they're probably not gonna do. The job. That we really need to get done, you know, cause like Steve said, some of these storm sewers are just about under. You know, there's, like you said, you got a couple inches sticking up, so it's like, you're gonna be, you're gonna be digging down probably. What do you say, Steve, on some of these?
You're gonna be going down ten, twelve inches on a lot of them.
That's what I thought too.
I mean, that's.
So like you said, it probably wouldn't be too popular, but, um. It might be a little bit more of an easy fix if we get, um, get the storm sewers fixed too, you know? Or get them, get them operating better, I guess.
And then we could have the homeowner reseed their own grass. That would probably help.
You, you're making all kinds of friends tonight. You're making all kinds of friends, so.
They come home with a torn up lawn and then we come home by the way, reseed your lawn. My Lord's man.
So, I don't know. What's everybody's feelings on this? I mean, uh, do we want to, uh. Get a tooth bucket and, uh, try and do this ourselves, or, uh, what's everybody's feelings?
Let's get a shovel and put it in the city guy's hands.
You're gonna have the biggest drainage just through your front yard, Rod, you ever thought?
But, uh. Yeah, there's a lot of places that Steve and I looked at that, it's like. You know, there's nowhere for the water to go. So.
Well, even, even this, along all the streets, it's the gra, dirt and grass is higher than the streets. So that water gets underneath the streets and we have a bad winter like we had this winter. You get all that moisture underneath the streets and it just blows them streets up. I mean, it's. If you could get that water away from the streets and out, you know, I think you'd have a lot less problems with the streets. Blowing up or busting up or.
Um, so what, uh. Steve, do you wanna, uh. What are we thinking here? We need to, uh, if we're gonna do this ourselves, we're gonna have to have a tooth bucket.
Yeah, you can't do it with that smooth bucket with side. I mean, it's a.
So do we want to, uh. Try and do this ourselves? Do you wanna try it, Steve? And you make, you, do we, should we get a tooth bucket? Do, do we, do we want to, uh?
That's up to you guys. I'm. I mean, I. I don't have a problem with doing it.
Beats a shovel, right?
Right. Get some bullet first glass in the windows on the. We'll go after it.
So what's everybody think? Do we wanna go ahead and purchase a, uh? So what's everybody think? Do we wanna go ahead and purchase a, uh? Tooth bucket then, uh, check on the, at least check on the price and go ahead and.
I checked on it last year and I think through Kuna, it was like twelve hundred dollars. I'm not so sure you probably couldn't find one somewhere else cheaper. I don't know. I can look around. I mean, we can wait. You guys can think about it till the next council meeting too, and I can get some prices and we can do it that way.
Yeah, I'd, I'd prefer that. Just get some prices so we know what we're gonna spend and.
I'm sure we can do better than twelve hundred.
I would, yeah, I don't know. I.
I would guess. Maybe I'm wrong.
Yeah. I mean, all those skid loader buckets are universal pretty much for every skid loader, so. You can probably get an aftermarket one that doesn't have a Kubota name on it or something that. You know what I'm saying? It's. But I, I feel like we need to do it. I mean, I, unless council's against it, I.
Well.
You drive down any of those streets and the water just runs right down the edge of the street. It can't get off the street.
I would, uh, I would give Steve the go ahead there and to, uh. To, to do what we gotta do here. I mean, um, and Jim, like you said, you kinda wanna wait or whatever and price out this bucket. And I, I'm with you. I think maybe we can get one for less than twelve hundred bucks and they're all universal. The, the thing is, is we have borrowed, uh, triple J's a couple times here on projects that we've done. So I don't know, maybe it's. Maybe it's time we looked into, uh, like you said, if we can get one reasonable, go ahead and do it. But what do you wanna do, Jim? Do you wanna wait or do you? What are you thinking?
Well, I, I just, you know, I, I think we just need to buy one ourselves. That way we got it. And then, then we, once we get it, then we can, it also gives the public plenty of notice that, you know, what we're gonna be doing. So.
Yeah, we could, we probably should put it on the website and. Let people know, but.
Well, I, I just don't wanna show up at somebody's. Front yard and start digging and they don't understand what's going on, so.
Yeah, that's why we'd have to put it on the website and, uh. But, but so everybody, you know, know, kinda knows what's going on here. Because, uh, Steve's right. I mean, the water's running down the road. It's not running in the ditches and it's sitting in the ditches and. You know, it can't get away, so. And like you said, there's probably a few places, well, probably more than a few that you, you're not gonna be able to use the skid steer. And if we. Have to rent a mini backhoe or, or hire it done or whatever. You know, I mean, uh, we can do as much as we can do first and. And see what, you know, what's left, so.
You, you can get a lot done with a skid loader with a bucket. I mean, I. Guarantee we aren't gonna get it all, but we can probably do two thirds of it, I would guess. Time permitting, mostly, you know, it's.
So we wanna let Steve go ahead and price buckets and if we get one. Reasonable, I guess, go ahead with this project or what's, what's everybody's feelings on this?
I think we should give, I think we should get a bucket, but, you know, maybe not start the project till May or something, just so we have enough time so folks have some understanding. I, I mean, just, just for everyone's sake, cause I mean, obviously, I mean, Steve, Steve and Steve, they're gonna be, folks are gonna be calling you like, what the hell are you doing? Why are you tearing into my yard? I mean, I think outside of towns, some folks, we had to do this. We had to go and clean up their ditch and they were real upset. About us digging in their, their yard, cause I'm not sure people understand that the first two feet is ours.
So I'm kinda used to that by now.
I know. I, I know you are, Steve. You got, you, uh, you got pretty thick skin, man. I, I guess I just say, I, I'm perfectly fine with getting a reasonable price bucket. I think we should do something to give the public warning. That we'll be starting this project in like, let's say, May.
Yeah. I'd, I'd say I'll get some prices on buckets and bring them to the next council meeting and. We'll get a bucket after that and start whenever. And if we get it posted now on the website. I don't know if we need to go further than that and put it. In a paper or something. I, I don't know.
I don't know, website, Facebook, just the places we're looking. And I think that just enough that there's some awareness, so. The neighbor may say, hey, I saw something on Facebook that they're gonna be digging into people's yards.
Yep. It's about time or they're not gonna be happy at all, so.
You start digging in town, the world, the word of, uh, word will travel pretty fast.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, but try to warn folks the best we can.
Right, we'll do it. We'll do it on Facebook and our website and go from there, I guess, so. All right, and else, Steve?
No.
All right, all right. We'll move on here with discussion with city clerk, Deb Minor. Deb, what do you have for us tonight?
Well, all of the financial reports will need to be approved, of course, and initial and dated. And we got the updates for the code books. Um, anybody who'd like me to update their code book, please bring it down here to city hall. And I'll get those updates put in there for you. Um, we have one more bill from the fire department. This is a reimburse for Randy Birkin. For fifty seven dollars and two cents for some vehicle maintenance materials that he needed. For a fire truck vehicle repair.
All right.
For me.
All right, then we, uh, got the bills and everybody got a chance, I hope, to look at the bills. And, uh. Guess we make, have to entertain a motion. To, uh, approve the bills.
Jim, so move.
Levi second.
And Levi second, Rod?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Bart?
Aye.
And Levi?
Aye.
And Correspondents and Communications, uh, Bart Collins. With Dollar General called and, uh, requests a, uh, letter from the, uh, support of the city. That, uh, they are planning on moving into town, so. I guess we just, uh, do we have to have a motion on that, Deb, to approve that?
Uh, yes, well, that's really later on in the agenda, but yes, we can go ahead and do that now. Yes, I just put together a letter that just says that the council met and a motion to su- support the prospect of having a Dollar General. Store built in the community and the council supports the store and feels it would be a positive addition to the community. And we'll work with the Dollar General store to retain and create additional jobs for the city of Clarence.
Okay, where are they planning on building this?
They didn't, they don't know.
They don't know yet, okay. Um, so we can make a motion there, Deb, to approve, uh, the letter to. Uh, make them, anybody wanna entertain a motion to, uh. Approve and a, a letter to, for the support of Dollar General stores.
Jim, so move.
I'll second, this is Levi.
Levi? All right, Rod?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Bart?
Aye.
And Levi?
Aye.
And else we have, uh, the Raymond Coonrod Trust donation for city parks and new shelter. Do we, uh? Have to do anything with that, Deb?
No, it's just that we got, um, three checks for two thousand dollars each. Um, the first check is for the original park. Uh, the second check is designated for the Ray Conrad Memorial Park downtown. And for maintaining and beautifying currently and in the future. And the third check is to be used for the Robert Bun Memorial Shelter. So each check was two thousand dollars.
All right. And, uh, moving on to new business.
Out of curiosity, uh, they sent us the money for that shelter for the, the Bob, the Bob Bun Shelter? Is that, are we managing that money or is that?
This check is for upkeep, I believe, you know, for us to keep. You know, for when we have expenses for that shelter, cause the city will eventually have a lot of expenses for that shelter.
Okay.
And also I don't think it's gonna be called the, uh, Bob Bun Shelter. I think it's just gonna be called a community shelter. I don't think the. Bob Bun is not the proper wording on that, correct?
I don't know who that question's to. I don't know.
I don't know either.
Okay, I don't think it's gonna be called the Bob Bun Shelter. It's the last I heard, so. But.
Steve, Kyle could probably answer that, couldn't he?
I don't, you wanna comment on that, Kyle?
I have heard on the street that it's no longer the Bob Bun Shelter, but I, I don't know the answer.
Okay. All right, uh, let's see, new business. Uh, approval of resolution for adoption of budget amendment number one. The approval of hiring for the public works position. And, uh.
First, we have to prove the resolution for adopting the budget.
Oh, I'm sorry.
One, that has to be done by a motion.
Okay, do we have a motion for adopt, for adoption of the budget amendment? Number one.
So moved, Levi.
Levi.
Second, Jim.
And second, Jim. Rod?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Bart?
Aye.
And Levi?
Aye.
Okay, so we got the adoption for the budget amendment. And approval of hiring for the public works position. Levi and Rod and myself, um. Uh, did, uh, some, uh, interviews. With candidates and we have desire, decided to hire a guy by the name of Ben Mathias. And I need a motion. To approve. The hiring of Ben Mathias.
It's right. I'll make a motion.
I'll second it, Levi.
Levi, okay. Uh, approval of resolution for pay to add.
But we need to vote on that.
Oops, I'm sorry, yep. Okay, so the approval for hiring the public works position. Uh, Rod?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Bart?
Aye.
Levi?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Approval of resolution for pay to add meeting pay and training pay for ambulance. And add new public works employee, okay? So we have to have a motion?
So the, um, resolution says that ambulance full-time personnel will get fifteen dollars per meeting attended and fifteen dollars per training attended. And for the public works, Benjamin Mathias for twenty-two dollars per hour.
Okay. So do we wanna, anybody wanna make a motion to, um. For the meeting pay and for the public works employee?
I'll make the motions, Levi.
And Rod? And Rod?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Bart?
Aye.
And Levi?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. And the approval of renewal of liquor license for Victory Lane is complete. Do we have to have a motion on that? Do we? Or is just? Yes, anybody wanna make motion to approve the license?
Let's try, I'll make a motion.
Rod?
Jim, second.
And Jim, okay, and Rod?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Bart?
I'm staying.
Levi?
Aye.
And the motion carries. And, uh. First reading of ordinance, amending water rates to take effect July first. So we have to make a motion on that, Deb?
So, um, I'll just read you the good part of that ordinance. Water service will be furnished at the rate of seven cents per cubic foot of water used. With a monthly bill of seventeen dollars and fifty cents for usage of two hundred and fifty cubic feet or less. Plus a basic service charge of two dollars fifty cents per month.
All right, and so that, does that have to be, uh, approved by motion? Deb, or not?
Yes.
Yes, motion to approve the ordinance for water rates effective July first.
I'll make the motion, Levi.
Levi?
Second, Jim.
And Jim, okay, and Rod?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Bart?
Aye.
And Levi?
Aye. Can, can I, can I, uh, make a motion to waive for the readings of that?
No, we don't waive the readings on when we change rates.
I know we don't, but we're not gonna actually, I mean, we're just gonna vote on it three times in a row and just do it.
Yeah, that's how we like to do it because it gives the public time to object. And there's no reason to. This is why we start reading them in April to take effect in July.
No, I, I realize that. I just know what we're going to do.
And that's the reason we do it. We read all three readings when we change a rate.
Okay, well, I guess I'll, we'll draw my motion then.
It's good practice.
I know, but we're not gonna change, so that's why I'm arguing it doesn't make any sense to read it all three times. Cause we have to, to afford our bills.
It's a good idea to go through all three readings when you're changing rates. Just in general.
So what are we doing here?
We're moving on.
Moving on, okay. The first reading of the ordinance amending sewer service charges to take effect July first.
And here I'll read you the good part two. Each customer shall pay sewer service charges in the amount of one hundred percent. Of the bill for water and water service attributable to customer for the property served. But in no event less than a monthly charge of seventeen dollars and fifty cents. In addition, each customer will pay a sewer project fee, charge of six dollars fifty cents per month.
I'll make a motion to accept the reading.
All right, motion by, by, second by who?
Rod.
Rod, okay, Rod?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Bart?
Aye.
And Levi?
Aye.
All right, and, uh, reading of ordinance amending provisions pertaining to vicious animals. Per Iowa codification. And, uh, you wanna comment on this, Deb?
Um, I thought maybe Kyle could explain what happened with this.
Basically, I, Iowa codification sent out those changes that updated basically the vicious animals ordinances for cities based. Ordinances for cities based on the state law changes. And when we adopted their recommended changes, it changed the. The amendment that we made to our vicious animals ordinance back to what they had by state definition. So we're basically changing it back to the way we wanted it, based on our last hearing with Zach Thurston's dog.
So the definition that we want is vicious animal means any animal that has bitten or clawed a person or persons while running at large. And the attack was unprovoked. Or any animal that has exhibited vicious propensities in present or past conduct. Which has been found to possess such propensities by council after hearing.
We're going back. And I had written after our last hearing.
We already changed that.
Yeah, but like Kyle explained, with the update that the state had on the vicious animal ordinance. Um, the, our council a- adopted it, and so that changed it back. So now we're just changing it back to the definition that the council wants.
Oh, okay, I didn't realize that. I thought that, that the state was giving us what we wanted. We, we have to change what we just agreed to back to what we originally agreed to. Because the state messed it up.
Right, that's why I had Kyle explain it to you.
Okay.
Yeah, my daughter was yelling in the background. The last codification changed, changed the definition we wanted. To the state law definition that we didn't want.
Okay, I'm, I'm following now.
I got a question for him. Um, does that, this, uh, say anything about domesticated animals? If it attacks a domesticated animal within two times within a twelve-month period, so. If this dog, or let's say it's, this dog went over and, and killed the. Killed the cat, the neighbor's cat in their own yard and then. Two weeks later, went over there and attacked the neighbor's dog. Can we still de- declare it a vicious animal?
I don't have the ordinance in front of me.
Okay.
And I don't know. The answer.
I can easily read it tomorrow and I have it in front of me and send you an email.
All right, I was involved in, in writing the ordinance. At my last place I worked at and then that's what, that's what we put in, so I, I didn't know if that was included or not.
Yeah, Brian was in it on this one with us when he was still here. And I don't remember how exactly we worded it.
Okay.
All right, do we have to make a motion on that Deb?
Yes.
Okay, make the motion, uh, amending the provisions pertaining to vicious animals per the Iowa codification.
I'll make a motion, accept the first reading.
All right, Levi?
Jim second.
And Jim? Uh, Rod?
I.
Ron?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Bart?
Hi.
And Levi.
Hi.
Should we wait to waive reads in case we need to change that per the, the outcome of the? Thing Rick just talked about?
I don't think so, because what we're talking about is just the definition of vicious animals. And I don't know if that is included in the definition. I don't know.
So the state definition has what Rick was talking about with the animal has attacked. Any domestic animal or fowl on two separate occasions within a twelve-month period. And that's. Read our new one back Deb.
Vicious animal means any animal has bitten or clawed a person or persons while running at large and the attack was unprovoked. Or any animal that has exhibited vicious propensities in present or past conduct. Which has been found to possess such propensities by the council after hearing.
So the way, to remind everybody, the way the state law one read, it basically had. A has bitten or clawed a person on two occasions in a twelve-month period. B did bite or claw above the shoulders of a person. C could not be restrained by the owner at the time of the attack. Or D has attacked two domestic animals in a twelve-month period. So what happened at the last hearing? One of those A, B, C, and D was met by the animal that was subject to the hearing and basically the council decided we would rather. Decide on a case-by-case basis of whether the animal is vicious based on its conduct. By independent review of the council. So essentially, Rick. When you think there's an issue or an animal that should be brought in front of the council to determine whether it's vicious. Basically, you would cite it, we would have a hearing in front of the council where the council is free to determine. Based on what happened, whether they think the animal's vicious and what should happen to that animal. So we took out that portion of the definition you're talking about. Because essentially, we felt like that A, B, C, D was too constraining on the council. Whereas in the last situation, it was above the, you know, bite or claw above the shoulders of a person. And the council decided because the animal didn't have a violent history apart from that incident. That basically we weren't going to deem it vicious, which meant that state law definition would not work. With the way we were handling our hearings.
Okay, I understand.
So this is the way we wanted it drafted, was this way to give you guys the freedom to decide. Every time an animal like this is brought in front of you, what you want to do.
So it'd be a case-by-case deal.
Case-by-case review of the council here.
All right.
I'll make a motion then to waive the further readings.
All right.
Jim second.
Okay, Rod?
I.
Ron?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Bart?
Hi.
And Levi.
Hi.
Okay. And approve, approval for the mayor to sign Iowa DOT five-year agreement for maintenance and repairs. And Deb can comment on this. She got a letter and, uh, basically it says that, uh. They'll do the maintenance, uh. Through the city, is that correct Deb?
Yeah, basically outlines the responsibilities for maintenance and repair of the primary roads within the corporate limits of the city. During the period of July one, twenty twenty-one through June thirty, twenty twenty-six.
Okay. So we make a motion to, uh. Have me sign that letter.
Levi, uh, I'll make the motion.
Levi?
Jim second.
And Jim. Okay, Rod?
I.
Ron?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Bart?
Hi.
And Levi.
Hi.
And approval for the mayor to sign a letter of support to bring Dollar General to Clarence. And I think we already did that, did we not Deb?
Did that already, yep.
What, what is the DOT maintaining through the town? Just the road, they're, they're doing storm sewers or anything, are they?
No, I'm sure it's probably just the roads.
All right. I didn't know if it specified out what they were maintaining.
You can look at this tomorrow if you want to, Steve.
All right. I know, most of the towns, it's just the. Road, not the storm sewers or anything. Storm sewers fall on the city. So I would imagine it's the same in Clarence, but.
Yeah, I think I, uh, looked at it briefly and the way it looked to me is like, uh. If they were going to do any seal coating or crack filling or whatever and, you know, plowing the, plowing snow through the, you know. On the, on the main highway, they, that's theirs, so, but other than that, as far as a storm sewer, I don't think so, probably.
Probably not. All right, that's all I wanted to know. I'll look at it tomorrow.
Okay. Um, and we already did the, the Dollar General, right, uh, Deb?
Yes.
Okay, and, uh, discussion for process for hiring for city clerk. I think we probably want to get this going here. We've got quite a few in the folder here. We've got probably what, fifteen, I would guess fifteen, sixteen applications and, uh. We should probably move forward with, uh, hiring, uh, for the city clerk position. Anybody have any feelings on that?
No, I think we should, I think we should start hiring, at least start the interview process as soon as we can.
Okay.
Uh, Jim, I, uh, Jim, I'd like to see Levi on the committee.
All right. Okay, we don't need to do anything more with that, do we Deb?
Probably should hi- get a hiring committee though.
Okay.
At least one other council person.
I would think, uh. Levi, would you be interested in that?
Yeah.
Levi, uh, anybody else there speak up, want to show any interest in it? Rodney, you interested?
Sure.
All right, I'll get Rod and Levi and myself and we'll get going on this. Uh, we don't have to do anything more with that, do we Deb?
I don't know what else there is to do.
Okay. And discuss the MSA bid to do procurement for deratio tree removal. To complete the FEMA grant. And Deb, you can comment on this because you know more about it than. Anybody, I guess, so.
Well, um, we kind of ran into a roadblock, um, putting the bid documents together. In that all of our trees are listed by, um, GPS coordinates. And we need to put bid documents that can actually tell them where the trees are located, so. Um. We were going to ask for help from MSA, but the bids came in today. Did you see them?
No, I did not.
Okay. Well, I don't know if they actually understood what we were looking for. Um, because their bids seem to, uh, include a lot of stuff that we weren't, weren't really asking them for, which you know, I told you I was afraid of that. From the questions that I gotten from Sarah.
Right.
So they're, you know, very high. It's twelve thousand dollars for that. And then to help with everything else, it's another ten thousand dollars. So I don't even know if that's, if MSA is an option for helping us with this because. There's no way I would expect it to cost that much.
They wanted twelve thousand just to do the bid documents?
Yes.
Seems a little high, doesn't it?
She's got it bid, I mean, she's got it looking like she's preparing like a bid, you know, like if we're. For some huge project, which isn't really what we're asking for, so. Yeah.
Does she understand what, what we want then?
I'm not sure that she did.
Okay, um, I think we, uh. Maybe need to touch base with Sarah again and. You know. Um, discuss this a little bit because. We've done all, a lot of the legwork on it already.
All we really need help is to put together the bid documents.
That's right, that's.
That's what I think.
He doesn't understand, I don't know.
So this is just the bid for the tree removal?
Yeah.
So Levi, you're pretty good at computers. So we got all these, uh.
GPS coordinates.
GPS coordinates, and I, I got on Google Maps and was trying to. Plug them in on Google Maps to get, that basically what they want is the physical address of the house now. When this all started, they, they wanted GPS coordinates, now they want the physical address of that.
And we're just trying to map that back?
Right. So we're trying to take the GPS coordinates and put the physical address of the.
So I figured out today how to make that work on group, on Google Maps. After I looked at these bids. I, um, you know, I had originally tried it on Google Earth. And it not work on Google Earth. Um, at least not on the computer that I was doing it on. But, so today, I, after we got these, I tried it on Google Maps and it is possible to do it. I did it to about ten trees. There are a hundred and fifty-seven trees on the list.
Well, there you go, Sarah. Ask the city for twelve grand.
So, you know, it's going to be very time-consuming, but it is going to be possible. For me to put addresses on the trees now. It'll take a long time though.
I, I actually tried doing it and I couldn't even get it to come up.
Well, I couldn't get it to work on Google, um, Earth, but I figured out today how to do it on Google Maps.
I, I'm gathering though, wh- what you're doing is since you know the physical address, like you pump, you punch it in and then you just, you kind of see where it's at and then you know what the physical address is.
Yes, and then I look it up using software that I have for the utility billing, because everybody's addresses is in that.
Right.
That's how I was doing it today and I got about ten of them done today.
How many total trees do we have Deb?
Sarah said on hers that there were a hundred and fifty-seven. I thought there were a few more than that on there.
Okay, well. I'm glad you figured out how to do that anyway. I don't think we want to use Sarah though, at twelve grand, do we?
No, I don't like so. I mean, all we need to do is get physical addresses.
I mean, well, the other thing is, is that we don't know that that's all that we need to do. Because FEMA. Well, Steve, the two Steves were in on a phone call with FEMA the other day. You know, we were trying to get some answers and to a lot of our questions and. You know, they kind of saw how frustrating it is trying to get answers from them.
It was very confusing, I gotta say that. It was very confusing.
We're, we were actually on with Homeland Security the other day. Which they tell you one thing and FEMA tells you another thing. So you do what one of them tells you. And then the other person wants the total opposite of that. So it's, that's the frustrating part.
Yeah, and that's when we started thinking, maybe we should, we can get some help. You know, so that we didn't do something wrong, you know? Even if we figured out how to put addresses to the tree. Put a document together for the bids using that. Well, maybe that wouldn't be good enough, you know, there'd be something else they throw in that we had to do, that we hadn't thought of.
So when this whole thing started, they wanted GPS coordinates, now they want physical addresses. So they totally flip-flopped that around, so. It's. It's beyond frustrating, I'll just say that. But I don't, I agree, I don't think spending twelve thousand dollars is going to solve our problem.
No, I don't think so either.
Do you think we could get ahold of Flannery in Cedar Rapids and find out how to do this the proper way?
Who's Flannery?
They're the ones that are doing all the stuff in Cedar Rapids.
Yeah, I.
They are doing, they're doing all of Cedar Rapids?
Yep, they're out of Wisconsin. Like, can maybe stop and talk to them, Steve?
Be an option, because I don't think we want to give MSA twelve grand.
I mean, maybe they could give us some insight what we need to do.
Yes, that's what I'm saying. Right, get us, get you pointed in the right direction anyway, you know?
Exactly.
So. Maybe talk to them.
I'll do that, see them get ahold of them.
I think a lot of it has to do with the right leg doesn't know what the left leg's doing. You know what I mean, it's it. If they have. One common paperwork between the two entities, it'd probably be a hell of a lot easier. But you go from talking to one and talking to the other one and it's totally confusing. So. And I, I honestly can't tell you what's the difference between FEMA and Homeland Security.
Well, FEMA is the nationwide and Homeland Security is the Iowa. Well, FEMA is the nationwide, and Homeland Security is the Iowa.
Now.
statewide. That's what they told me.
But they're not on the same page either, because like I said, why wouldn't their documents be the same or whatever? It'd make it a lot easier. So.
One's federal, one is state.
Yes.
So we'll just, if you want to look into that a little bit, Rod, and see what, uh. They can maybe guide us in the right direction, I don't know.
Yeah, their headquarters is right down the street at the old RMS building. Two buildings down from us, there's, they're five thirty every morning, I can go talk to them.
Perfect. Go from there then, anyway. Um, and we had the discussion for the sewer lateral filming, we already talked about that, right?
Yep, same.
Okay, and then, uh. Kevin Skinner's bid for the cemetery mowing and trimming is the same rate as it was last year, and we need, uh. Approval to, uh. Keep Skip, keep, uh, Kevin Skinner at the, uh. Same rate as last year. Do we have a motion to pay? Kevin for trimming the and mowing the cemetery.
Jim, so moved.
Jim?
Ron.
Rod, second.
And Rod, okay, and Rodney?
Hi.
Yeah, uh, Rod?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Bart?
Hi.
Levi?
Hi.
And, uh. We already talked about the main street, uh. Instal- installation of the, uh, information sign.
I think the council should vote. Their approval of that sign, if they approve of it.
Well, I don't know, um. Are we going to go ahead with this project? Do we? Or we want to wait and see what, uh, Kim Aker comes up with?
I don't know. I understood that Kim wanted to have the council's approval. To, in order to submit that grant, but maybe I was mistaken about that.
All right, well, we can, uh. We can make a motion here, I guess, to, uh. Uh, to move ahead with the, uh. Information sign, I guess. Is that the way we want to word that, Deb?
I, I think she said she wanted approval, do you guys to let her put it out there on city property? Is what I understood, but.
To put it, say that again, Steve, you broke up.
I think she wanted approval, the okay for her to put it out in front where she wants to put it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm back here now, sorry. I'm back here now, sorry. Yes, um, I just want permission to put a sign on city property.
Okay, does anybody want to make a motion here that, uh. We approve, uh, putting the sign here and where Deb, uh, or, excuse me, where Kim, uh. Suggested out front here?
Rod, I'll make a motion.
Rod?
Jim, second.
And Jim, okay, Rodney?
Hi.
Ron?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Bart?
Hi.
And Levi?
Hi.
Okay. So the, uh. Installation of the information sign where it's to be placed is approved, and we have, uh, council. Persons concerns. Anybody got any concerns tonight?
Steve, it's Rod. Steve, it's Rod.
Yeah, go ahead.
End of Ninth Avenue, where it's all grass and the gravel gets pushed down. The neighbors were wanting to know if, when L and L pellling comes in, if they can put blacktop at the end. Or do something so all the gravel's not pushed into the yard there. Just saying.
Would that be down there, um?
Bob Schrader and Dawn Frye.
And Dawn Frye?
Yes.
Um, to pay, to pave that, that little section down there?
Yeah, or put blacktop in or something.
Yeah, that's probably not a bad idea, because when we, uh. We plow the snow, um. It's all gravel down there, just gets pushed out, so there is. You know. That's, that might not be a bad idea, we can talk to Pelling about that.
Okay, just let Steve know.
Right.
I heard you.
Okay. That's all I have, Steve.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, this is Bart. I was just wondering if, uh, we've got any more globes for out at the park, the park lights? There's a bunch of them that are missing after the, all of our lovely wind we've had. I, I don't know if it's like anything else, it's tough to get anything ordered. We, we actually do have some out at the park in the shoulder, or in the kitchen. All right, because I, I know the last time I walked out there, there was, oh gosh, I bet at least a dozen that, that needed replaced.
There's seventeen missing.
How many?
Seventeen.
Well, okay, well, then there's been five got blowed away the, in the last couple of weeks, so. Not surprising.
Um, Casbury and I were out there the other day with the, uh, insurance guy, there's seventeen of them missing, and he has. Quite a few globes. I don't, he don't have seventeen, I know that, but he's got quite a few, but some of them are, um. The top is bent, so the globe is not going to fit on them. There's, something's going to have to be changed there, so.
All right, well, that's all I had.
Okay.
Maybe one other thing, since you're talking about the park, is the, the Veterans Memorial out there, you know, there's still three stones laying in the ground. I still think that there's broken things. Is there a plan to deal with that thing at any point in the future?
Um, with Casbury, the other day, we were talking about that, and, uh, the insurance guy. And I think, uh, we'll see something happening with that pretty soon. I got a feeling that they're going to take them stones and cut them down, they're going to be a little bit shorter, so they don't stand up in the wind, is the way I got it. So, um, like I said, the insurance company's in on it now, so we'll see where it goes from there.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else? If no more counsel.
Oh, Steve.
Yeah.
Hi, sorry, it's Brittany. I forgot, there's one thing that I did want to tell the council about. Um, on the March third Tipton conservative, the Tipton conservative paper, the ambulance did make the front page of the paper. In an article that was written, and it continues on to page ten. About one of the things that we got involved with at Christmas time for the Operation Giving for a Clause. Um, and then, uh, so. The ambulance and fire departments within Cedar County adopted all of the nursing homes and assisted livings throughout Cedar County. So it was three hundred and twenty-six residents, and they gave Christmas gifts to all of them. And then someone wrote an article for the paper about it, so that is in there if anyone wants to read it.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Brittany. Okay, anybody else? All right, if we have no more, uh, concerns. Uh, we will. Adjourn the meeting.
Need to have a motion, Steve.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We got a motion by who?
Levi.
Levi?
I got the Jim.
Jim, and, uh, Rod?
Hi.
Ron?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Bart?
Hi.
And Levi, and the motion carries.